With sound this time, it's 5:30, so we'll call to order this meeting. Jordan, would you start us off with the roll call, please?
Please respond by stating present Councilmember Ronan.
Present.
Foberg.
Present.
Lee Belt. Ward.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
E. Conger.
Present.
Nielsen.
Present.
Norv Strup.
Present.
Mayor Shawman.
Present. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Take a motion to approve this week's agenda.
So moved.
Motion, Nielsen. Second, Lee Belt. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next is our approval of the minutes for last week's meeting, which took place on August 25th. Take a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, E. Conger. Second, Nielsen. Anyone have anything to discuss on those minutes? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We've got two signees for our open forum, so we'll give them each a few minutes to discuss the Main Street project. Dawn, would you like to go first? LeAnn would like to go first. Here we have LeAnn Fredrickson. Is the little green light on, LeAnn? On the speaker there?
It's on.
It's perfect. Now we can hear you. All right, go ahead. The floor is yours.
I'm LeAnn Fredrickson, and I have been shopping in Aberdeen for over 50 years. Upon reading the first on the front page of The Insider last week, I became aware of the planned change in the direction of the Aberdeen Main Street from one-way to two-way. This change was made several years ago from a two-way to a one-way. Many nice effects have been added, including the very pretty planters and some really nice trees. The appearance of our Main Street is very satisfying to the eye. The billion dollars or more that it will cost the taxpayer money that they could well be spent on more useful projects. Of the people that I have talked to, both the younger and the older generations, the majority is not in favor of the change. In fact, not one person that I talked to was for it. The only people that I talked to were the ones that I talked to on the phone from the Aberdeen City Council. Those who I talked to, here's what they say. Let's keep the way it was. Let's keep it the way it is, one-way.
Thank you, LeAnn. Appreciate that. Very decisive commentary from LeAnn. We've got Dawn as well. Dawn, would you like to say a few words? Dawn Shepherd, welcome to the meeting.
My name is Dawn Shepherd from Aberdeen. I agree with LeAnn. I think the Main Street is beautiful. I think the years of work and money that the city has put into it and the merchants, I think we have a beautiful Main Street. It's peaceful, it's friendly. I feel it's safe, and I believe that it should also stay one-way. I know that there were a lot of talk about studies that were talking about one-ways are now turning to two-ways on downtown streets, Main Streets across country. And I did a lot of research this weekend, and there are a lot of them that are doing it, but they're all larger cities, anywhere from five to 10 to 20 times the size of Aberdeen. And most of those, I looked at them, I saw videos, I saw pictures of these places, and these streets are four, five, six lanes wide. They kind of are more comparable to our Sixth Avenue, and I think that our Sixth Avenue is more what these studies were geared to. And unfortunately, I think with that, people in Aberdeen just need to accept that our Main Street is never going to be Sixth Avenue, and I don't think we want it to be. I think we have a wonderful area. The Downtown Association has promoted a lot of activities on Main Street, like the hot summer nights and, you know, special shopping events, and I think they're doing a wonderful job at keeping it small-town, keeping it local, but yet bringing a lot of vibrancy to the community and a lot of outside shoppers when they have these special events. What I do, they do have some other things that they said, like the safety. They felt that the traffic was going too fast one-way. I drove down there last night from Sixth Avenue to the flame, there's one stop sign. I think just putting a stop sign at fourth and second would slow it down. I don't think the traffic goes very fast in those five blocks, but if you need more stop signs, that's a simple and very economical solution. The other thing, if they want to promote shopping, I really think it's a digital age and it's online shopping, and I really am struggling to find any stores on town that have any online shopping places where I could, I work during the day, it's hard for me to get there during those hours. If they had evening websites, or evening websites I could do, I would shop and spend my money more locally for stores on downtown. The other thing is that I know there are websites, people have geared me to, the Downtown Association has one, the Chamber has one, and the Visit Aberdeen one has one, that try to list the businesses in Aberdeen, but I do not see a website anywhere that lists every single business or office or everything that is on our downtown Main Street. There isn't one. The Downtown Association supports its members only, the Chamber supports its members only, the Visit Aberdeen, they break theirs down to some restaurants and hotels, no stores. The Downtown Association, I looked on theirs for shopping today, there were four stores, four stores on one page. When I went to another, there was 12. When I went to the Chamber, you have to know the name you want to type in, or you can do it by category, or if you type a keyword. I typed a keyword in for Dairy Queen, it brought up the Hampton Inn. I typed up a word for Main Street, and it brought up stores that are from Groton. So, I mean, some of these websites really need some work, and I guess what I'm saying is I really feel the Downtown Association and the Chamber could do a lot more with a lot less money in just starting by improving their websites so that people from out of town who want to come here and say, "Where should we shop? Where should we eat? What's downtown?" They could go to one website that shows everything that's downtown broken down either by category or by shops, by restaurants, by offices, to make it easier and know for people from out of town know what's there, so people in town know what's there. I just feel that the Downtown Association should probably be looking more at improving it that way and at least making visible to the outsiders what is actually on Main Street before asking the taxpayers and the city council to use taxpayer money to change it to a two-lane road. I don't believe it's necessary, and I don't believe it will make much difference. So I think we should just leave it the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing with us. Appreciate that. As a reminder to the two of you, as well as to anyone watching and the council as a whole, we will be having a comprehensive discussion of this a week from Monday, a week from yesterday, so next Monday, that'll take place at 5:00 p.m. You're, of course, more than welcome. We'll hear both sides of the issue and discuss the ramifications of converting our one-way into two-way, both positive and negative. So appreciate your, both of your input. Next, we've got our consent calendar. We're going to lead off the consent calendar with the proclamation. We've got Anna from the KLE Library, almost said Alexandra Mitchell Library, out of muscle memory there, but no longer as of years and years and years. But, welcome.
Hi, thanks for having me. Oh, I didn't have to press a button. So, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Anna Lillian Moser, and I'm the Library Director at KLE Aberdeen Public Library. This proclamation is about something that we celebrate every September, which is our Library Card Sign-Up Month. It's a national thing that we do through the American Library Association, and we just sort of want to get the word out to the Aberdeen populace in the surrounding area that we're here and just all the amazing, wonderful things that we have at the library for the community for free. So, all of our resources are free, we want to keep it that way. All of our programming is free, all of our lending is free. So, we just hope that if you don't have a library card yet, that you will come in in September, and hopefully we'll have some raffles and stuff like that to give away for people who do sign up. So, yeah, I don't know if anybody has any questions about the library or that I can answer for you now, but we're just so grateful to the city council, to the community, and to our city administrators. Like, we've had a kind of a rough year 2025, so you were all so supportive and such great advocates for us, so we're very thankful, and we're thankful for this proclamation tonight.
Thank you very much for joining us. Maybe I'll take a moment and read the proclamation then. So, as Anna mentioned, it is officially Library Card Sign-Up Month here in September, whereas libraries are foundational to education, imagination, and opportunity, offering everything from early literacy programs to digital tools that support lifelong learning and personal growth, whereas libraries welcome all people, serving inclusive and accessible community hubs that connect individuals across cultures, generations, and experiences, and whereas libraries curate collections and design programs that reflect the diversity for the populations they serve, ensuring equitable access to information, technology, and culture for all, and whereas libraries help individuals navigate life's challenges by providing trusted information, digital access, job search support, and connections to essential services, and whereas libraries contribute to a thriving local economy by equipping job seekers, entrepreneurs, students, and creators with tools and training to succeed, and whereas in times of crisis and calm, libraries and their staff remain steadfast in supporting and strengthening their communities, and whereas library resources help households save money, reduce waste, and make sustainable choices, all through the simple power of shared public good, and whereas Library Card opens doors to endless possibilities, from books to technology to lifelong learning and imagination, I therefore Travis Shawman, Mayor of the City of Aberdeen, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as Library Card Sign-Up Month here in Aberdeen, and I encourage residents to sign up for a Library Card and to explore the endless possibilities that it offers. So, for everyone listening, if you have not got a Library Card, get in there and check it out. It's a beautiful facility and hosts a lot of things outside of just books. So, thank you for joining us. The rest of our consent calendar includes a daycare license with an administrative exception for Nicole Fuller. I took a look at that, being that this is our first administrative exception. Is that the case for these, with the new process, or not necessarily the case?
This request here went through the normal special exception process through the border zoning adjustment.
Okay. Shoot, I thought we had another milestone on our hands. Couple of new daycare licensees, a daycare license renewal, and a set bid date for snow removal services, community event permit for Dakota Prairie Museum's Harvest Stroll Festival, which would take place later this month on September 27th, and finally, a lottery notice for the Dakota Prairie Museum and the YMCA. Could I get a motion to approve those consent calendar? I move to approve. Motion, Ward. Second, Offspring. Anyone have anything on any of these? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Single item of old business here tonight. We've got a special, we've got a second reading and possible approval. It's an ordinance 250801, which petitions to rezone property at 511 Arch Street. Can anything happen since the last vote?
No changes since last week.
Passed without exception. Last week's meeting, I take a motion for the final reading and adoption of this ordinance.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion, Lee Belt. Second, Ward. Any discussion before we take our final vote on this topic? Jordan?
Councilmember Ronan.
Aye.
Foberg.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
E. Conger.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Aye.
Norv Strup.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving along to our new business, we've got a public hearing and possible first reading of an ordinance titled 250901, which is our 2026 Appropriations Ordinance. Who's going to kick that one off?
I'll kick it off.
Robin Wood.
So is, you know, we talked about it, the work session here a few weeks ago. This process started back in April with department heads starting to work on their requests. We're hopeful that this is actually a collaboration of both department heads' thoughts as well as the council. This is, we hope that this brings forward a lot of the projects, wastewater treatment plant, Public Works facility, a lot of those types of projects, Dakota Street reconstruction, Moxon Creek cleanup, that water tower and transmission line. All these things are things we've been talking about for a number of years. And this is, this is your largest ever budget, and it just means you're trying to move forward. It's a lot of progress for the community, and that's a good sign. We want to make sure that also our community partners realize that we're putting money into their agencies to try to make their agencies provide more and better services for the community. We're following through with the recommendations of the Condry Study and trying to make sure that our staff is well-paid, that they're competitively paid, that we're following through with what our bargaining agreements tell us we need to do. And so, this will, this will be a step here, as we talked about a couple of weeks ago. It will include a cost of living increase. The promotion fund, there's an allocation in there, as we did last year, and I think we've probably done that at least two years prior, where it's an allocation, but you will do the final divvying up of that money by resolution here in the next week or two. Schedule-wise, you know, we've done our work sessions. Tonight, you need to introduce that. That's what we're doing now, and there's a possible first reading, but we have until the end of the month, basically, to get everything done so that Jordan can meet state statute. So, if there's any hesitation tonight, that, we do have some time, but the clock's ticking, so we need to make sure we do it with some urgency as well. Did I have anything else? The Capital Improvements Plan, actually, the hearing will be in two weeks for that, and at that point, we will need to incorporate the whole budget. The Capital Improvements Plan is part of the entire budget. So, for the first reading tonight, that would include the capital improvements, but you would have your hearing to make sure you understand the allocations, and I think we've talked about most of those allocations at least once in the past as part of that work session. So, I think that's really all I had. Reminder, you're at $178 million budget, which is a whopper, but actually, we're a little bit lower in the general fund-supported things, so that's encouraging. So, I think that's all I had, and I guess I'll turn it over to Jordan to maybe give more detail, if he'd like.
Sure. Thank you, Robin. I would just mention that this budget is the same budget that you received on August 4th, with the exception of one minor adjustment related to the Moxon Creek Project Fund and special sales tax. There was a slight discrepancy between those two funds. This ties it all together. Other than that, this is the budget that was within the packet that's advertised on our website, available at the library and also in hard copy at City Hall. The notice of hearing for this, public hearing, was published on August 21st, and that was the same day we published the notice of hearing for our work session that will be on the 15th for the purpose of our Capital Improvement Plan. That basically summarizes what I wanted to add, and staff recommends approval of the budget as presented within ordinance 250901.
I move to approve proposed ordinance 250901.
Mayor? Oh, go ahead, Councilman Johnson. Sorry, you can see your finger right away.
I'd like to make a motion that we table our first reading vote until our meeting on Monday, September 15th, recognizing that one item that we'll be discussing specifically next Monday at our work session, that's the two-way Main Street. It's found on page 46 of the Capital Improvement Plan, item G. We'll have a wide array of ideas and thoughts and opinions, and that would allow us to have that collaborative spirit, air those thoughts and ideas, and then on the 15th, have our first reading, once we've taken input and provided feedback to one another.
I would second that.
So I've got a motion from Councilman Johnson and second, Councilwoman Lee Belt, to table this first reading vote here tonight. Jordan, talk to us about timeline. We're going to be all right in terms of having the first, obviously, we're talking about the capital improvement project component that we'd like to maybe have a little bit more finality on.
That's correct. This would allow more conversation prior to first reading and approval of the budget ordinance. As Robin mentioned, we're statutorily required to present the budget at the first meeting in September. We do have time to table this until the 15th to allow for additional conversation and public input at that work session.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman?
I guess maybe a question for Ron, but are we allowed to discuss other questions with this motion on the table, or do we need to, I mean, there's a whole budget to discuss before we table it. I was wondering.
I'm sorry, we're, I believe, are we still in the hearing phase here?
So, we've got a motion, second, on tabling. I asked, made a clarification that we'd have enough time to meet the statutory requirements.
Well, here's what I would, here's what I would say, that we hold on the motion until we've concluded the hearing, because we need to at least satisfy the hearing portion. And of course, once we've satisfied the hearing, then we can move on to the motion, and if the motion is to table, then you can consider that. But I, I think we should formally close the hearing, if that's the case. But if there's more discussion to be had at the hearing, now is the time to probably do that.
Do we need to rescind the motion first?
I'm okay with just holding it.
Okay.
Until we conclude the hearing.
Councilwoman Foberg, have you got particulars that you'd like to address with the budget as a whole, or any particular line item therein?
Yeah, I think it would be really helpful to get an overview of the cost increases, like, are most of the cost increases coming from insurance, coming from, meaning the Condry Study, I mean, the budget's higher, but where are you seeing the biggest impacts on the budget in terms of funds?
Okay. Well, I don't know if Jordan has specifics in front of him, but the largest impacts, I would say, would be salary as well as the salary and benefits side of it, and that's going to be your largest portion of your budget anyway, typically with the exception of capital projects. As far as the overall cost of insurance, we did add some additional money into the fund to try to make sure that it's sustainable, because we are self-insured. Jordan, do we have that number?
I don't have the exact figures for that increase, but I would point to Exhibits five and six, which illustrate the increase to the general fund, both by function and department. Exhibit five shows the year-over-year increase in expense category, and exhibit six illustrates that increase by department, so you could really hone in on which areas are seeing increases by those functions.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Can, on page 35, there's general fund expenditure comparison by department, year-over-year, and I'm curious more about the Public Works budget going down, specifically the airport and the snow removal. And I know you have deep conversations about these, so I'm not questioning the decisions. I'm just more wondering how the decision-making happens.
Well, part of the, part of the cost for, as an example, Public Works, we have carried for at least five years a $400,000 piece of equipment that we have purchased. This year, that was one of the items pulled from that snow removal budget, and so it's a capital equipment cost that we pulled in order to balance the budget. The feeling was that we could rent that piece of equipment this year, that we have gotten several of those pieces of equipment in the last several years, so we decided to take a little breather, catch up, and so that's why that particular budget is lower than it has been for a number of years, and it's that $400,000.
Thank you.
Dollar expenditure. On the airport side, it's more of the taxiway improvements and things like that, so it was the capital side of that.
I would also point to Exhibit four for the airport, where the federal grant revenue is down accordingly. We just don't have the projects this year, or next year, within the 2026 budget proposal.
Any other questions, Councilman? And the staggering number is basically a result of those capital projects. I mean, the one being wastewater treatments, single-handedly the largest project the city has ever undertaken. It all kind of shows up on the byline here for one time, so that shouldn't, I guess, affect future budgets in terms of overall budget impact, although we'll be paying for it till the end of time.
It's worth it. Or so they say.
Anyone else in the council have anything to discuss about particulars of the budget itself? All right. So then, we'll take a vote on the tabling.
Should we go ahead and close the public hearing then?
Oh, that's it.
You can announce that.
Okay. With that, the public hearing will be closed on this issue, and we will take a vote to table the first reading of this until week after next, at which time we've had to consider the input from public and the vested interests at stake for the Two Way Main Street project that we were to undertake this upcoming year. Jordan, would you give us a roll call to table this first reading?
Councilmember Norv Strup?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Foberg?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye. Motion carries. We will pick this issue up week after next on Monday. Second item of our new business here tonight is a possible amendment of a council handbook, following publication of the notice of intention to amend. Ron had run through some options in terms of how we will handle vacancies. Other than that, we discussed everything at length a couple of weeks ago. Ron, what have you come up with?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, first of all, I want to just make sure that everybody understands that this is being done pursuant to the notice required by the council handbook. So all of you have been given notice that you might be amending the, the council handbook. And I did prepare, as requested, a written ballot option for article, for the amendment to Article 17 of the bylaws. Remember, the, the packet last week had just the spoken ballot, and I did prepare a written ballot. And I, as I read that, I, I look at that and see that as a very acceptable alternate as well. So, I would recommend that the council move forward with amending the council handbook and decide which of the two versions of Article 17 it would prefer to, to adopt. And once that is done and passes by a majority vote, then I will prepare the final handbook and present it to the mayor for his signature and, and then distribute the handbook to everyone.
Thank you for that explanation. Is someone in the council willing to make a motion on this issue? Go ahead.
I move that we approve the council handbook with the spoken ballot option.
Second. I've got a motion from Councilman Knopster and the Second Councilman Ward to adopt changes with the option of the spoken ballot for, for open council positions. Anyone in the council have any input or feedback, or would like to discuss any or all of the changes? All right. Easy as that. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote?
Councilmember Ronain?
Aye.
Foberg?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Norv Strup?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we've got a possible approval to request a purchase of a 2025 Ford Explorer interceptor vehicle from Carl Ford in Story City, Iowa, for $44,143.20. Let's talk a little bit about that acquisition. Is Chief McNeil, chief, tell us about this truck.
Yeah, thank you. So, one of the resources in our crime prevention strategy and operations in Aberdeen is utilizing an illegal drug detection dog. And with that comes expenses. The current dog that we have is about eight years old. The national average for a lifespan of an operational dog is about seven, so he's doing well. But we want to continue those operations, and with that, we look to our partner, the South Dakota Attorney General's Office and their Drug Control Fund. Asset forfeiture funds are utilized to supplement departments across the state to continue these operations. So, we asked for some funds to be able to put together the purchase of a dog and a vehicle and some equipment. We're granted that, $66,710 to continue our program. So with that, we would like the $44,143.20 to be utilized for a vehicle for our next oncoming animal.
Move to approve. Second. Got a motion from Councilman Johnson, Second. Councilman Nelson, any questions from the council? Go ahead. Start with Johnson, since he was closest, I guess, for.
Sure. Chief, this sounds like a, a good, good use of funds here with that grant. I'm wondering, do you have a single officer currently paired with a canine, or more than one officer?
Just one officer. Yep. It's a one-in-one partnership, so they're partners, but inseparable, much like having a child in your family, but yep, one, one officer per animal.
Okay. And Tom, did you have something?
Yeah, I think I was just, just more curious than anything else. On the, in order to get a vehicle to qualify for, for that, I mean, you're looking for a specialized vehicle. Are there only a certain number of places that offer those? How do you go about procurement?
Yeah, so basically, it's a police package vehicle that has, you know, different suspension and, and different things that you can, you can fit equipment into. So this would be a Ford Police Interceptor. And then what we'll do is we'll upfit existing equipment we already have in our inventory that may fit, but at the same time, there are things that you have to buy. And granted, and given that this is a 2025 and kind of late in the season for purchasing vehicles, we'll look, try to attempt to look for something local, but usually something specializes like this. You kind of have to go in a regional fashion for that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Chad, did you have?
He addressed it. I was just gonna ask how we ended up in Iowa.
Local option. But we did take a look in, in South Dakota, and there's not a better choice closer.
This is, yeah, I know the sheriff's office uses Fender before, just because of how, how they keep their supply and, and, you know, and again, in this late in the season, it's tough to find cars with a specialty police package, so.
Thank you for making that clarification. We've got our motion in our second. If there's nothing further from the council, Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote then, please?
Councilmember Norv Strup?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Foberg?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we've got a possible approval of a pay request title number five for $241,274.1 for 10th Street Bridge Replacement Project to frame construction of Slaton, Minnesota. Stu, how is that project coming along?
Thank you, Mayor. So, the project's going really well. The, there's been a lot of activity down there, and you can really, if you haven't been there in a couple of weeks, you can really see that there's been a lot of progress made. They, like the pay request said, they've got that west abutment done now, and they've done most of the wood pilings that they're gonna use to support the falls work, to actually, you know, construct the bridge deck and, and get everything set. So, things are changing rapidly, and I think the contractor feels like they're closer to being on track than they were even a month ago. So, the engineering department recommends approval of the payment.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, Councilwoman Lee Belt, Second. Councilman Ronain, it looks like they've done a good job of deconstructing, and you said, when in our previous conversations, they'll remove those wood pilings once the bridge is constructed.
Correct.
Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote?
Councilmember Ronain?
Aye.
Foberg?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Norv Strup?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we've got our review and approval of our claims and payroll. Payroll period is from August 24th through September 6th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion Ward, Second. Nelson? Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote on our payroll and bills?
Councilmember Norv Strup?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Foberg?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we've got our city manager's report. Robin, how are things going in City Hall?
Good. And we had a really good turnout, I thought, for National Night Out. It was gorgeous weather. I saw a number of you there. It was really a nice night. And I was concerned, frankly, that due to the postponing and, and so on, and being during school, that it would affect numbers. But I, it was well attended. It was really, I, I thought, done very well. So, thank you, chief. I received a water test kit in the mail. I don't know if Stu brought his or bought one of them. Forgot. There, people are receiving these water test kits at home. It is not something that the city is promoting, and it is, it's a marketing thing to try to sell water softeners or things like that. So, just be aware that this is not something that the city's promoting, and that it may not, it may not follow the, the exact EPA standards of what is safe and what is not. They're, they're probably gonna give you some, some information that you're gonna feel is alarming that really isn't. Our water is safe, and it, and everybody needs to know that. Secondly, you probably will receive in the mail here in the near future something on that water line, service line warranties. And I got some information from them today that they, I think they've got 780 people signed up currently for this service line warranties. There again, this says City of Aberdeen on the logo. It'll say City of Aberdeen. We are not actually promoting it. It is something that was done through the National League of Cities, I think 13 years ago. And they use the city logo to let you know that it, it is there with your approval, that it's something that can be marketed in the community, but it's not something we are promoting. But if you're concerned about the cost of repairing certain things like your water sewer lines, that's what this is for, is to, to help you offset some of those costs. So, if people have questions, they certainly can call Stu's office or my office to get a little more detail on what it's all about. And last but not least, we did do a 10-year certificate of appreciation for Brian Jarvis out at the water reclamation facility today. And Brian is now the head of our, our maintenance portion of the wastewater plant, and thankfully, he's gonna be there through the entire reconstruction process. And this, it's a good thing to have that consistency through it, and, and of course, we'll have Amanda there too. So it'll be a good, good partnership for them. And we thank Brian for his 10 years already. And actually, ironically, we did his son's 10-year certificate out in Public Works Solid Waste in May, I think. So, got a couple Jarvises this year.
Well, thank you, Brian. Appreciate that. That length of tenure over here at the city, people like that make a big difference around here, of course. That warranty work that is being offered, does that have anything to do with lead pipes? Are they in the business of replacing lead pipes, or you're stuck with what you got if you've got a lead pipe?
It, it is not going to pay for replacement of lead line unless it is leaking, and they, they deem it in need of replacement. But just by virtue of the, what it's made of, it won't take care of.
All right. With that, I would take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion Johnson, Second. Nelson, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion carries. We adjourn. Thank you all very much.